The January 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting is hereby convened and called to order. I would first ask, well, first to simply extend greetings for a Happy New Year to everybody. Hope everyone survives the holiday season in relatively good order. And the new year begins. Let us start with the approval of the minutes for the special meeting on December 13, the regular meeting on December 13, and the special meeting on January 6. Is there a motion?
I'm over.
A second.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Thank you. I will begin with the mayor's report. And just to comment as the, under the Zoom system that we're involved in. If you recall, when we were meeting on a regular basis on Zoom, our format on screen was basically a checkerboard. And all of the participants were, or most participants were both visually and audibly present. And there was an identification name beneath each. The format has changed some somewhat with the integration of the live and the distant participation. And what we're working on is trying to get further back to the process we had where, if you choose to, you're able to see the whole room, if you will. If there are two or three screens worth of checkerboards of people participating, and there's some wisdom from this, about this from Zoom, that it enriches the meeting if we convey more of a sense of how many people are participating and that sort of thing. So I just want you to know, we're working on that. Every bit of this is over my head, but we've got very good people trying to do that. To just make it, if we're going to continue into the future with a combination meeting, to make it the richest format we can in terms of participation. The matter is in the news, I would talk about. Let me start with, we celebrated with Aiden and with my colleagues in the fall, the success of the parking, the Park Mobile program that we had and the income that it produced. And we very excitedly and ambitiously set out to do some sidewalk work. And we did quite a bit. We did $94,000 worth of sidewalk work just recently. And that is essentially more than three years' worth of what we were able to do in our conventional budget. So the program turned out to be more ambitious than we've been able to do in many, many years. And for that, we're very, very grateful. I want to apologize to the village that the timing got awkward because of the rush to get it done, against the weather, against the clock, and so forth. And so we found, as we got into the lower streets, a couple of occasions, an afternoon, better part of the day, where there was some interference, or at least disruption of some of the shopping environment. So, yes, I'm sorry, it happened that way. That, it's an explanation, not an excuse, that the contractor was available, the clock was running. We had a couple of days of loss from weather. And so my apology to the village, to the merchants, particularly on Main Street. I visited with them the last few days. But let us not lose sight of the fact that we were able to accomplish record numbers of repairs. And we'll have details on that very soon, very soon. We had scheduled three introductions for tonight. But upon consideration, we've had a number of late appearing commentary, thoughtful commentary from a lot of interested and involved people on our approach to the rental registry. I recall that we've undertaken to create a rental registry for all the good reasons one would have it, and especially driven by considerations of safety, public safety, particularly the experience of the early fall. So we are going to, it's in the agenda, but we're going to put it over until the February meeting, while we further digest and work with the additional inputs that we have had. We treat this as a very important legislative writing project for us, and we want to get it right. So that will be, we'll not have that on the, on the agenda tonight. We do have two other introductions, which we'll talk about. One, dealing with pre-submission requirements. And another, and Aiden, I would ask you to leave that when we get to it, is the paid parking revisions we want to make to the program. We'd also been asked by Pecanic Jitney for them to come in and make, make a discussion like a presentation of where things have gotten. A lot of that has to do with what's going on in Greenport. They said they were not ready, so we will not have a report on the Pecanic Jitney tonight. And they asked if they might come in in February. And with that, I would conclude the mayor's report. And in order, for the first time in many months, I would now call on the treasurer in sequence, as described in the agenda, Tim Bullock.
Good evening, board. As of November 2022, the revenues are at 10.6 billion. The building department is up remarkably, 175,000 over the prior year. We also received donations in November for the fire boat, 80,000. We also have insurance claims towards the fire, new purchase of the fire boat, 24,000. Justice Court is down for the prior year, 180,000. Again, this is prior from backlog tickets in prior years that happened. But for them, they're pretty much, they hit the revenues as expected that we budgeted for with current year. Expenditures were at 45% of our budget, at 8.2 million compared to prior years that were at 13,000 at this time. Variance due to our bottom more down payment on the van, offset by the timing of the health insurance billings. In November, we had some street paving for Clinton, Elizabeth, and Jefferson of 72,000. And we also had additional costs with the sewer shed K at 35,000. And then the cost to tow that fireboat out of the water cost us 8,000. And then also, we're going to the budget season for the coming year soon. So we meet with the department heads to find out their expectations and requests coming up. And that's my report.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for the treasurer?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. We'll go to now to committee reports and begin with Deputy Mayor Tom Gardella on police, fire, and ambulance.
With your permission, mayor, I'd like to go out of order and recognize somebody in the audience. Sure, sure, it's okay. I'd like to call Counselor Edward Burke Jr. up. He has a presentation to make to the village.
It's not a subpoena, is it?
Not a subpoena, mayor, and a pleasure to appear before you and your trustees and this town. Usually I stand before this podium on, on Fridays advocating for my clients and standing before several boards with site plans and zoning plans. And tonight's so, so different. What a way to start off the new year, just in this, in this way, mayor. I have a donation, as I heard Tim talk about the fire boat. This is a donation from a client, a friend, his wife, who would like to make a sizable donation to that project. Jack and Cheryl Morris, who have recently come, our neighbors here in Sag Harbor on Rice and Street. And we'll flip the page from previous years of that to the present time where they could be happier. And to that, your honor, I'm calling you, your honor. Mayor, I have a donation of $100,000 to that project from them. I have this check here, which usually checks our hard-to-reason.
You don't have one of the big ones where we?
It is my pleasure to speak on their behalf and pretend to take that. And I wanted to make that statement on their behalf.
Please express your gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you. You are always welcome here.
Yes.
I'll see you next, next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Jack.
Mr. and Mrs. Morris.
Thank you. So on that subject, mayor, the, as you know, we had the $250,000 grant that we worked on for the kitchen and other improvements at the old firehouse repurposed because we had put that project out to bid three times and we didn't get any response. So we had that $250,000 repurposed towards the purchase of the boat with Assemblyman Fred Deal's help. And with Jack's donation of $100,000, I believe we're, where are we right now at the boat reserve?
We're probably with that, 249,000.
So that would match that 250. So right now, we have half a million dollars to purchase the boat. So we'll be going out, we're finalizing the specs with the chiefs. We'll be going out to purchase the boat.
That's excellent. Congratulations, Tom.
So, so that will lead us, lead me to the, I'll start out with the police department's report for the month of December 2022. The police, Sag Harbor Police Force was called out 675 times in the month of December. There was one unlawful disposing of, I guess it was a ticket or a summons. There was, I guess somebody ripped up their.
Never a good idea.
There was, no, not a good idea. Four suspended registrations. There was 10 motor vehicle accidents in the month of December. We had five arrests, no DWI's, thank God, no BWI's, because obviously there's nobody on the, not too many people on the water. And we had 50 uniform traffic tickets were issued. For year to date, we had 120 arrests, 10 DWI arrests, and no BWI, which is boating well intoxicated. We didn't have any of those. And we had 687 uniform traffic tickets issued. And the chief for us has done a five-year comparison, which I'll share with the board. It's in your packets that that shows the comparison of over the years.
Can you say again the number of callouts for the month of December?
Was 675.
In the month of December, it's 20, over 20 a day.
Yes. So, you know, part of, again, the, the, I think the misconception in general with law enforcement, you know, there, there's so much interaction with the police and the public. And the fact that every once in a while, there, there's a bad incident, I don't think people really take into consideration how, what that percentage is overall on how many times the police respond to calls. And our police force, we're very blessed that our officers, the chief, and everybody, we haven't had any complaints. I haven't gotten any personal complaints. So I would like to thank them for a very productive and successful year with the village. So thank you to our police force. That brings us to the fire department. In the month of December 2022, the fire department volunteered for over 998 man-hours. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to 59 calls for service. These calls included three structure fires, two motor vehicle accidents, four mutual aids to Bridgehampton and North Sea. With the holiday season in full swing, the Sag Harbor Fire Department helped Santa get his public events within the fire district by delivering him to the windmill and taking him through North Haven. The members of the fire department also participated in first responders' basketball game against the teachers at Pearson, which we won, the first responders won the game.
Everybody survived too.
Congratulations.
Did you, did you see the game?
I did not.
I didn't see it. Victory for us. That leads us to that, the ambulance corps, which in the month of December in 2022, we had 78 emergency calls. We had four work nights, two meetings, two training sessions, and one standby for a total number of man-hours of 965, which is up from December of 2021. December of 2021, we were at 698 man-hours. So that's quite a jump. For the year, we had total man-hours with 12,993 for the volunteer ambulance corps. So as you can see, there's been a significant increase in the number of emergency calls handled by our organization. We were able to handle the increase with the same number of volunteers we had last year. So our president, Missy Hester, would like to wish the board a happy and healthy coming new year. And that concludes my report, mayor.
Thank you, Tom. Next up, trustee Korshe for the sewer department, village grants and related matters.
Thank you.
And parking.
And parking, I'll run into parking right now. Are the only ways to introduce that?
No, go do it now. It will get to you.
Well, in a very good way, sewer and grants overlap. Tonight, I'll start off with the sewer report, and then we will be able to move on to our grant situation. So the sewer report for the month of December, year of 2022, the total gallons received in the month was 1.815 million gallons. Total gallons of sludge removed, 21,000. DMOR reports were forwarded on 1/17/23. Suffolk County DHS inspection date, the next inspection for Suffolk County be, well, it's actually was yesterday, 1/9. But I guess this report was prepared a few days beforehand. The New York State DC inspection date is open as always. We have no complaints. Summary of operations, waste order treatment plant running well under all permitted levels. And we're now just operating on two of the five 50,000 gallon basins that we have. Benson Contracting, who are a repair company we use, they came out to install new influence valve in basin number one. We had one alarm at the plant for a power loss that was checked out. We said everything was okay. The flow increased from November, December, the flow increased from November to December was approximately 128,000 gallons, showing that, I guess, business in the village, the commercial district picked up in the month of December. Moving on to grant reports, we have some very good news this month. Apparently, town of Southampton, at their October meeting, approved our grant application for sewer shed K. And that was in the amount of $2,340,536. That's a remarkable amount of money for this village to get. When we add that to the over a million dollars we've got from East Hampton, and another 600,000 pending from East Hampton, that gives us our, the match we need for the $6 million plus dollars that are, that is pending right now from the state of New York. That's an application we put in last July. At the time, we weren't able to confirm that our local match had been assured, but we said it had been, that it had been applied for. So we're still waiting to hear the results of that application. Normally, the state would return these results in, in early December, first or second week, and all the New York State CPF applications would come out together. This year, with new governor, it's slightly different. So results are coming out in different tranches, depending on the nature of the application. So we're hoping in the next two or three days to hear about New York State. If we're not successful, we'll immediately have a conference with the state. We'll find out what our shortcomings were, and we'll make adjustments, and we will reapply. And I have no doubt that we will ultimately be successful. So we can press ahead with the searing of these two areas of the village and be great benefit to our water quality. Also, more good news for Haven's Beach. Last year, you may or may not remember, we submitted an application to New York State for $66,171 to conduct a very in-depth study of the Haven's Beach watershed to see what we could do to help, help the quality of the water that's coming out of the drain there. We were unsuccessful last year. We sent for New York State, who revised our application in accordance with their very constructive criticism. I'm happy to announce that we found out this week that we were approved for $66,171. So we'll be able to move ahead with, with that study. And hopefully, that will allow us to get a much better understanding of Haven's Beach and what we need to do there to improve it as, as time goes on. That's very exciting. This is something that's been three or four years in the making. So, so far, we have received, we're almost at a 5 million, as far as grants that we've received since we started these sewer projects, going back about four years ago. We've had just over a million dollars from East Hampton CPF. Suffolk County gave us $250,000 this year. And I just gave, and then we also had for engineering work earlier on in this project, we've had about $500,000 in total from both towns for all the, the engineering work we needed to do on areas K and L before we could even start to apply for grants. So, and we also had $144,800 from East Hampton and Southampton CPF's to create the, the master plan that all this is based upon. So we're really hoping as we move ahead, we have a sewer committee. And Ed Hay has joined the sewer committee, as has.
John Shaka.
John Shaka from the planning board has joined. And John Parker has been working with us for a long time. And we worked with Jennifer Messianos, our grant writer, and Mark Wagner, who is our consultant engineer. So we feel some great momentum moving into this year, that we can make some real differences. And hopefully, you know, within 12 months, we might have shovels in the ground somewhere. So that's all very exciting. I'd like to thank everybody that's involved. This is work that's been shared out among an awful lot of people, put a lot of time into it, and all the municipalities in the state of New York, who are so generous in the, in the grants. It's, it's a very worthy project, but, and it's going to take another few years to come to fruition. But we're, we're well down the road. And I believe that brings me on to parking. So we're going to, paid parking has proved to be fairly successful. And we've seen that the vast majority of, of the money is coming from our friends and visitors from out of town. So this year, we would like to expand the season a little bit on the front end to bring it in May 1st, instead of May, I think it was May 17th or something else we started last year. And instead of ending on October 10, we're going to run it right out to the end of Thanksgiving, to the end of November. So we have a proposal, we're going to introduce a public hearing, I guess, notification of a public hearing, that we would begin paid parking from May 1st, and then we would, we would extend all the way through to November 30. One of the things we're going to look at at paid parking this year, as you know, we paid for a lot of sidewalk repair. We may also be able to use some of this paid parking money as a local grant to leverage state money. So for every dollar we can raise locally, we can turn that into $4 with the state if we have a local match. So as we, as the year progresses, we can look at other big projects out of those that may need to be, that may need to be undertaken, and maybe some paid parking money instead of using it to do projects, you know, out of cash flow, that we can use it to leverage more state funds for, for bigger projects. But that's a discussion that we'll have as, as the year progresses. And I believe you've heard enough from me right now. So thank you very much for your indulgence.
When you bring money, you can talk as long as you want. Thank you, Aiden. Mr. Plum, planning.
Yes, we're still in the process of organizing a public hearing for, and we're trying to get it on soon, I hope. In terms of it'll be either a, in, in regular trustee meeting or a special session to just get input from village residents as to what they see as the goals and the obstacles, et cetera, and long-term, big picture outlook and planning for the village. So we are trying to organize that. There's a lot of pieces.
Great, thank you, Bob. And trustee Hay.
Thanks. This will be brief to the Mash Park, I'll start with, is going through, the winter months are a little quieter there. A lot of cleanup going on in the park. But there's also a lot of work done by the park board on planning some of the capital needs for the park going forward. Hardcore tennis, which might end up becoming a pickleball court, who knows, going forward. And then the houses that house the Mash Park employees as well are going through some upgrades. We're planning for the funding of those in addition to the next stage of the grandstand repairs, the lower levels of the grandstand. All works in progress over this winter, either in the planning stages or in the case of the grandstand, hopefully will be completed this winter as well. And the park and the school continue to discuss and negotiate longer-term capital improvements to the fields of the park. Some of that's contingent on what's going on between the CPF and the school for the Morrison properties. But we continue the dialogues going and keep the planning process going. So whenever decisions are made, we can move as efficiently as possible to begin the capital improvements. That's pretty much it for the Mash Park. And for the justice court, we have no reports to give today. We're going through some personal changes at the justice court, and we'll resume the, the reports next month.
Thank you, Ed. I will now pick up the court medals that I do. I wanted to get out of the way so we could receive our visitor with money. Talk first about the building department. We now have the figures coming through the end of December. And it looks like year to year that the revenues produced via the permitting process have come in at $875,460. That represents a $295,817 improvement over the year before. These are very good numbers. And recall that when Chris Talbot arrived as our new building inspector, he brought us up to date on practices in and around the region in terms of fee structure. And we were operating with a very outdated protocol. And we've gradually, gradually brought it up to this kind of a result. It supports a major improvement for us in code enforcement and, and watchfulness and all the things you want to do in a department like that. And so it's finishing the year in, in a very good place indeed. The code enforcement by the, and the activity by the fire marshal, now that we have our full, our own full-time fire marshal in Bruce Givoni, very qualified guy, former fire chief, and he has elevated our activity and the, particularly the safety-related part of our code enforcement, very effectively. He gets out there on a regular basis. And he is part of the working group we have that's working on the rental registry. Because the focus of our rental registry activity includes, and indeed is focused on public safety elements of the code. Code is meant to do many things, but safety, the community safety of people residing and so forth. So his activity report is here as well. Acted on 13 complaints in December, all resolved, and cited 16 violations, all of which have been addressed. So the building department ends the year in a, in a very good place. The Harbors and docks are similarly finishing the year in a very good posture. And to say the least, the activity along the waterfront remains quiet in terms of any boating. But the biggest activity you'll see are the ice eaters that have been installed at the transient dock and B dock to keep the water moving on the coldest days. The, finally, the two boats that were sitting lonely out there on the outer mooring field have been removed. The activity focused on the coming season has been very high. And a lot of people want to visit here. We're not going to be able to accommodate everybody. But we are ready. The system that Harbor Master has put in with the company that is called Daqua has streamlined our activity. It's increased our yield from our rentals and freed up personnel. And young personnel for us this summer is a real challenge with housing and other limitations being what they are. The department completed three marine patrols during the past month, including one that involved a windsurfer in distress, turned out to be okay. It involved calling personnel, personnel in who are off duty. And that was handled well. The numbers for the year, we in 2021 had a net inking, a net income, if you will, over the year before. And we are now finishing the year with an additional $122,000. So the, the good news is that this source, which is the. source, which is the second highest after property tax of revenue to the village and is our principal economy associated with tourism and recreation and culture and history that bring people here is finishing with a very good year. There's some real capital needs to be addressed. We received the bids, we completed a bid process for the transient dock. Transient dock being the low-lying dock with floats that's just to the west of Long Wharf. Took a terrible beating, particularly last winter. Not so, we're pretty good shape so far after that, but it's a real capital need. We've got some financing that we're putting in place and we are at work now on reviewing the bidding that came in and hopefully by next month, we'll be able to get that project in motion. It would be terrific if we can get it fully in place for the start of the season. And our thanks and gratitude to Bob and his team for advancing this as quickly as we have. And also, in this last month, we're welcoming the addition of a dock master. If you remember at last meeting, we brought Jack Reiner, Reiser onboard. And so subject to filling out with our young staff for the summer, harbor and docks are in good shape. The story over at Public Works, the monies that have been derived from parking have allowed us to advance the annual sidewalk repair renewal program at a rate that in a typical year, we budget only thirty thousand dollars for sidewalk repair. Thirteen million dollar budget, there's a lot of competition. So the onset, the advent of three times that amount for this fall's program means that in the last several weeks, the Department of Public Works has completed over sixty-three hundred square feet of new replacement, particularly in trip and fall areas that we've experienced. So instead of thirty thousand dollars, we were able to spend up to ninety-four thousand dollars because of the new monies. So that is a big lift. You've all seen them. You heard my apology about disruption, but the net debt here has been very positive, particularly for the commercial district. Because everyone will observe who's on the turnpike that Public Service and Electric Gas for Lightpa, Long Island Power Authority, is upgrading electric service along there. There are new conduit pipes being laid. It's off to the side of the road, but it's a caution area and it's going to be with us for several months. The utility has no option but to upgrade and strengthen the service because our population has grown. Our activity has grown and so that'll be with us for quite a while.
Is that electrical work?
That's electrical work. I'm sorry. Yes, it's the electric utility. We had the counterpart to that this year with new gas pipe. As long as we're growing and activity is rising, the utilities will have the need for these projects. Patching work continues. The street sweeping, the last of the leaves are gone. The department, four or five years ago, under Adie's leadership, has brought in a salt brine machine. And it is a machine that takes fresh water, mixes it with salt to a level that constitutes a safe level of brine for controlling icing on our roads. Doing it this way, rather than the salt that you see spread, the hard salts, the granulated salts, gives us an efficiency of between three and six times the amount of work we get out of the same amount of salt. So mixing the salt before application with water gives us the kind of glaze that allows the plowing to lift ice and snow much more efficiently, less damage to the roads. We've been doing it for the last four or five years and it reduces the amount of salt we keep on hand and which we apply. That work is underway. The post-holiday removal of trees, wreaths and other holiday paraphernalia is accomplished by Dodds and Eater. This is a local company. Some recognize the name from one of the members of the family who runs the music festival. This is all work done pro bono. Up and down, at no cost to the village, very much in the community spirit. And that work was completed this week. Other work that's going on, some that involves the other part of the monies from the additional monies from the parking fund. Remember when we allotted ninety thousand dollars for parking, we also added twenty for drainage and twenty for roadwork. Thus far, that has allowed the installation of two new hatch bases in Redwood. Overdue work, that's also a benefit of the program. And the other work you might notice is the Suffolk County Water Authority is out and about with necessary repairs and off-season work as well. So a lot of work going on in the village and in every report we've made so far, there's an element of public contribution and pro bono work. We are, many have noticed, perhaps noticed that there's some sand piles in John Steinbeck Park. And we are very close to being, starting to do the sculpting work to complete the the shaping of the ground above the beach area. And that will also involve the placement of sitting stones of some dimension along that along that stretch. And that is hopefully all work that will be in place with renewed topping, renewed seeding, renewed seeding and the beginning of the placement of clusters of starting with something called red oak trees. And as with what just happened with this Christmas and holiday work, pro bono, what you're seeing in the park in this phase is all pro bono. This is all donated. Ed Hollander continues to lead that effort. Just like we saw Dodds and Eater, a local company that was a tree company that does all good work around town, they stepped in and I think all of these examples. Sir?
The name of the company is?
Dodds and Eater.
Jackson, is it Jackson Dodds?
Jackson Dodds. Jackson, Jackson Dodds, not Eater. So historic reference. All the same family. Anyway, or not. That concludes my reports. That concludes the departmental reports. But as for motion to approve all of the departmentals and mayor and treasurer's reports. Is there a motion?
Second.
Your second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The matters are agreed to. We now are the reports are accepted. The, we now open a fifteen-minute public comment period on the subject matter of the reports just heard. Does anybody care to be heard on the reports? Please come forward. Start again at the mic if you would.
I just have a question about the planning meeting, whether you're putting out a timing that will involve the people that aren't here in January and February, because it's complicated to have a planning meeting, like why everybody should be here.
Intend to announce it in advance, if that's what you mean.
Yes, I've been thinking you have including a time that the people who are not here.
Will they be able to participate on Zoom? Yeah, yeah, yes.
We could have the meeting in Florida. All right, thank you. Any other comment? All right, we move now to introductions. We have before us yes. Planned. We have before us the first introduction, a local law amending village code, chapter three hundred, zoning three hundred fourteen point five, a planning procedure to create a new pre-submission hearing requirement. I would ask counsel Liz to give us a brief on where this comes from and what the idea is.
Sure. So this would be a local law to amend the site plan application procedure in code, which already has a pre-submission conference and work session provision in it. But this would require to actually hold a public hearing as that pre-submission conference. So it would open a matter for applications that are either larger applications or have greater importance to the village and they're listed in the in the proposed local law, the types of applications that would be subject to this hearing. But it would allow for those applications to be heard by the public or get input from the public immediately in the process. And they could weigh in on the SECR and any other concerns that the public might have. So they would be able to talk to the boards at the very first instance a larger application is submitted.
Would it be safe to describe it as formalizing a practice that's occasionally been used of folks bringing forward a proposal on a discussion basis before they're ready to bring it forward formally?
Right. Well, I mean, a discussion, you know, the applicants will come in on a discussion. This would allow for the applicants and the board to hear from the public as well.
At that, in that same setting.
That same setting, at the first initial setting.
Is this, is this, are these meetings going to take place at a regular board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the proposal. I would hear a motion to introduce that which would set in motion a public hearing process on this legislation. Let me get it introduced first, Anthony. Is there a motion to introduce?
I'll move it.
Ed, is there a second? Bob, the matter is an introduction. All those approval proof indicate by saying aye. Anthony, did you want to be heard? Come on up.
So this is just setting a public hearing for the fourteenth. So come, make sure, you know, if you make comments tonight, that's fine. Come back on the fourteenth.
Public input on this here.
I guess I just want to the first time and I just want to clarify something here. You know, some of the things that, the projects that would be subject to this pre-submission requirement. And I hope I'm just misunderstanding the intent here. For example, it says the construction replacement of any new non-residential building and structure, including an accessory building or or structure. I mean, does that mean like a one-car garage in an R twenty district that's conforming to zoning?
That's non-residential building or structure.
Okay, so.
Why you say, so if it's a section in R twenty, it's conforming, it's residential.
Yeah. I think, I think that's what I'm basically getting at here. This is just strictly for non-residential projects. So in other words, you wanted to build a garage on your, behind your restaurant or something, that would be subject, garage behind a house. Okay, okay. All right, that's, that makes sense. I think that's, that's my always concern. Thank you.
So the motion has been introduced to set this in motion for public hearing. I would invite all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, the public hearing process has begun. Next up is a local law extending the season for paid parking regulations as presented by trustee Corish. Would you like to introduce and explain?
I will indeed. After the success of the last two years of paid parking and the differences made to maintain the solid streets and other projects that are transportation related, we feel that it would be appropriate to extend the season. We don't think that will be a great hardship village residents, considering that most of the monies, not almost all of the monies that have been collected are from people from out of town and our holiday season and our vacation season seems to be extending every year. So the proposal is for a short extension on the front end. So we would begin paid parking season on May first at twelve AM. And we conclude the paid parking season of November thirtieth at eleven fifty-nine PM. So that would extend, I think, by about six, six weeks. I don't think it will be too onerous. I think it would be great for the village. I think the upside potential is wonderful.
And this will set the public hearing for February fourteenth?
Yes. So I'll make the motion.
You make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is open. Is there anyone care to be heard on this?
It's not open. It has to be noticed and it'll be open on February fourteenth.
Back in a month.
Just to clarify, this is just the same location. We're not adding any other locations. It's just Long Wharf.
Right. The third introduction, a local law amending village code to create the rental registry program is the one I described as we are removing it from the agenda for now as we continue work. And I would move next to we have no discussion items or continued public hearings. We go to action items. The first is the twenty twenty-two bank reconciliations and collateral reports for November. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Second and approve, right? Number two, motions agreed to. Alan Siegel requests authorization for commercial slip mooring usage of mooring number G three and dinghy dock number forty-six. Is there a motion? Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Ed, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is agreed to. Number three, Richard Scavoni, Secretary of the Fire Department, requests to accept the resignations of Patrick Lucick and Darius Dorf Lowry in good standing and also request to move them from the insurance rolls. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, matter is agreed to. Helen Degardi, President of the SAG Harbor Chamber, requests permission to have the twelfth annual Harbor Frost on Saturday, February fourth, two thousand twenty-three from one PM to six PM on Main Street, Long Wharf, Windmill Beach and Steinbeck Park. Activities include ice sculpting, live music at restaurants, outdoor games, polar plunge and fireworks. And they request permission to place a sign on the grassy area of Long Wharf. Is there a motion?
I just have a, do we know if they have the, if the firework permit has been submitted yet?
It has not. And we followed up with Ellen today. We left her message.
Yeah, there were, there was some, yeah, it's in progress. The, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ed, you can make that.
I'd love to make that motion.
I thought you did. Bob, second, thank you. I should mention to you all that in talking to the chamber today, I volunteered that trustee Hay was going to lead Harbor Frost Polar Plunge this year, just so you know.
From La Quinte, California.
Yes.
Which is where I'll be.
In which case, I think the deputy mayor is going to have to step up.
At a good time.
We're doing it in age order.
And we'll have a fire rescue boat there to, oh no, it won't be ready yet.
I don't want to be rescued.
Just let you go. Take long. All right, having bollocked up the sequence, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Anthony Hoggan, Anton Hoggan, requests authorization for commercial slip, mooring usage of slip twenty-three at Marine Park. I'll move it. Second, any discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It is agreed to. And number six, to accept the resignation of Mark Weiss, part-time police officer. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Just so you know, this, this young officer got a job. Just so you know, this, this young officer got a job, I believe, in Riverhead, full-time, right? So that's why he's leaving.
Number seven, Melissa Hassel, Mrs. Hassel, president of the volunteer ambulance, requests authorization to accept the resignations of the following staff and remove them from the insurance rolls. Oliver Loaiza, an EMT driver, EMT and driver, and Melissa Calhoun, paramedic.
I'll make the motion. And I said to see Melissa going because she was my, one of my instructors. But she lives further up west, and it's hard for her to come out here. So I'll make the motion.
Second, second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Authorization for the clerk to authorize the tentative assessment role when received to create an announced grievance day for February twenty-first from one to five PM here at Village Hall. A tax sale date of March fourteenth at ten AM, a budget schedule for the year at, for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, our fiscal year will be beginning in the late part of the spring, but the process opens now. Village Code twenty-two thirty-five four, snow and ice on sidewalks notice. And number six, code two sixty-five dash forty-three, parking during snowfall. These are all matters to come up and authorizing the clerk to announce each of these. Is there a motion?
I just have a question.
Sure.
That the snow and ice on sidewalks. Are we saying that if you own a shop on Main Street, are you responsible for that piece of sidewalk in front of you?
It's my understanding that you are, yes. And if you, same with your house, the front, the pavement in front of your home, if it's paved.
Is there any recall, if somebody's, say elderly, or they're having an issue with getting that done, is there anywhere buddy they can contact for help or?
I think the practice has been, in my experience, that Dee and the department manage to find a way when somebody needs some extra help. We're not, we don't like to exceed our authority, but if somebody's having a problem, either they've, somebody that they had didn't show up to snow, to shovel or something like that, we pitch in. Your, your village force does pitch in as needed. So is there a motion? On, on the six. Item number eight, authorization for the clerk. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Hayden, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, matter is agreed. Number nine, approval to set the date and time for the annual village election, June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, six AM to nine PM at fire headquarters, declaring vacancies and to advertise hall notices for village election. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Thank you. Number ten, resolution to accept the resignation of Leslie Murray. Leslie has been the clerk of the court for, I think, since it came over, since the court was created?
Yes, Leslie and I were hired actually the same day in two thousand and ten.
Okay, well, we wish Leslie all, all good wishes as she goes to the next chapter. Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The move, the motion is agreed to. Number eleven is to amend certain eligibility requirements and benefits under the health benefit. Is this the Locep item? No.
No, this is just that amendment to the insurance that we for person who is eligible for being here for a long amount of time and worked in those two departments, just amending that.
Okay.
I'll make the motion on this.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is agreed to. And I'm happy to make this resolution, number item number twelve, to enter an amended license agreement with our good friends at Keyspan Gas East Corporation, also known as National Grid, for the gas ball lot for the year two thousand twenty-three. Under these special circumstances, it's a one-year extension while the, our current challenge to the awarding of the lease to others is before the Public Service Commission, and this extension keeps us in place for the year or the settlement before the PSC, whichever is sooner. And so I'm happy to move that.
I'll second it.
This is one step at a time, as for many years, I just even come up.
What is the term of that lease? I mean, how long does the other, yeah, we have, I mean, the village has it for a year.
We've had it for five years under a dollar a year arrangement, and a couple of years ago, we competed for the long term. After that, and it was awarded to an outfit called Eleven Bridge Street, and was awarded a ninety-nine-year lease. And we objected then and now, and we are quarreling with the premises of that and how it came about, and asking that the lease assignment be disapproved by the Public Service Commission, and that in fact, we as the municipal government meet the highest test of public interest, which is the real standard that the PSC has to apply. So that's what, what this is about. The way it would be presented is that we will remain in possession and control as we have been now for six or seven years, while this matter works its way at the Public Service Commission. And if we're successful, the process would reopen. And in any event, it covers us through the year two thousand twenty-three if that process continues.
It's just, so when the village doesn't have any control, it would have been Keyspan. I mean, one would think that they would have put that out for a public hearing before they offered or issued a ninety-nine-year lease to anyone.
Well, they did advertise and invited bids. The story gets very complicated. I'm not going to go through it now. It's a pending matter at the Public Service Commission. But we objected in all the key points, and we are active at the Public Service Commission now. We think the matter of whether in this village that is strapped for tax, for parking, that we would not engage to save a hundred spaces and prevent it from going to a private for-profit LLC, strikes me as a no-brainer.
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. So I, I think I introduced. Tom, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Number thirteen, authorization to hire Brandon O'Sullivan.
I'm sorry, there's one question, comment maybe for Liz on this. The process is, what's the next step of the process for that, with the PSC? Is there anything we have to do or the other side has to do procedurally?
Procedurally, I'm not sure. We did, we are a party, so we will be noticed to the next. My understanding was the last thing was we heard from National Grid. Actually, no, the Public Service Commission requested further information, I believe, from National Grid for discovery. That's what, that's what the last thing was that I saw.
Great. There's been more than one round of that. There, I would say there.
And there were public comments, but on the website as well.
Yeah.
And we did obtain party status. We're listed as a party to Village Side Harbor. That's as far as I've seen it proceed.
Thank you. But it strikes me at this point, it's still ongoing. They're, they're reaching out here and there.
They're still doing.
They're building the records.
Yep.
So then it would seem that anyone in the village with village residents, they have, have an interest in this.
I'm sorry, Stephen, come back to the podium.
Should make it known to the Public Service Commission.
There is a.
Does that have any impact on the sweep now?
You can comment publicly on the Public Service Commission website. Last I checked, there were sixty-eight comments there for various people. Yeah, so it's available for comment.
Thank you.
DPS NY, nysdps.gov, and it's one of the more accessible websites. And it's, you just go right into their site. You don't have to post separately. You can do it right into the website, as many people have. I'm sorry, the motion, Tom, is to hire Brandon O'Sullivan as full-time police officer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Tom, do you have a word on this?
Just that this, this young, this officer was, has been working for us part-time, and the chief has recommended that he go to full-time. And we've had a discussion on it, and I think we should be approved.
Right, and we had a full-time.
We had a part-time officer. Well, we had a part-time officer has gone full-time in another department.
Right.
This is an additional full-time officer that we said that we would hire in the winter. It's now January, so.
Any other, any questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to.
Is the officer here?
I know some officers.
No, okay, I was just wanting to say hello.
They're just keeping their eye on us.
Yes.
Welcome, guys. Next up, Chief O'Brien of Sag Harbor Fire Department requests permission to hold their annual carnival fundraiser at Havens Beach from Tuesday, August one through Sunday, August five, with a fireworks display on Friday, August four. He also requests a rain date for the fireworks display on Saturday, August five. In addition, he requests to place signs on Long Wharf Mash Park Route one fourteen from July eighteenth to the first of August. Is there a motion? Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Number fifteen, Kevin O'Brien, Jr., chief of the fire department, requests permission to hold their annual department picnic on Sunday, August twenty, at Havens Beach from twelve noon to five PM.
I'll make the motion.
Tom, is there a second? Bob, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Matter is agreed to, opposed, the matter is agreed to. Sixteen, I am to adjust the cap of Stephen White as special counsel. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm just give a quick overview of Stephen's work.
So Stephen was brought on board to help us with grants as far as the fire department, ambulance corps, and police department. He's already helped us with the repurposing of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of the boat. He's, he's also helped us, assisted us with obtaining thirty thousand dollars for body cameras for the police. And he submitted, I've had him submit letters to Fred Deal, Senator Plumbbo, on our behalf to request additional funding. So he's already paid off what, what we've paid him, which was, I believe, seventy-five hundred was the first cap. So we're raising it slightly so he can continue his work.
Yep, no, it's good work.
And you make the motion, and is there a second?
I did second.
You did it, all right. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Thank you. Resolution, item number seventeen, to approve the service listing of the Sag Harbor Fire Department Service Award Program.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Kathleen Mulcahy, executive director of Fighting Chance, requests authorization to use Long Wharf transient docks for their annual voters against cancer fundraiser fundraiser on August, on Saturday, September ninth, with a rain date of Saturday, Sunday, September tenth. Let me welcome the former mayor. Good to see you, mayor. Did you want to talk about it a little bit? I like, it's got it introduced. I'll introduce it. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Welcome.
Yeah, just, this is a very, very important fundraiser for us that actually, with a little bit of luck, will be our biggest fundraiser of the year because we have so much excitement about it, and it's been so honorable. And Bob Bory, who's still here, brilliantly suggested we move it to September, which has our board so excited about it because that way the votes will be out, they'll be here. Hopefully, your vote will be working again.
That's always a tricky.
But September has more chance than midday.
Right. Yeah.
Really excited about it. But I realized sitting here that I forgot a major part of this. I would like to amend this to also include a sign at the end of Long Wharf.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. I would just say that, that this would be my third year. My middle, the first year was terrific. The second year, I never left the dock because my aging boat had no interest in participating that day. So I'm looking forward to a triumphant return the next year. Thank you for coming over. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Thank you. The nineteenth, for authorization for Heather Zikowski, office assistant to the village hall to attend the following, an introduction to governmental accounting, March eighth and ninth, and accounting principles and procedures, April nineteenth and twentieth. Heather is a terrific young woman working with us on the first floor of Village Hall, and pleased that she's available to take this additional training, and I'll move that. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Number twenty, assuming this is to have the assumption of the lead agency and determining significance for the proposed sewer extension action to sewer shed K and sewer shed L.
I would like to make that motion, and this is just part of the process in developing these two sewer sheds so that their, their status can be ready for action when the funds come into place.
So then the village board is.
Yes. I'll second that.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Twenty-one, regarding SECR for the Steinbeck Park waterfront walkway project. I'll move this and explain. Is there a second?
Our defensive horse area confirmed with a funeral for this hero, owner of horses.
Thank you for giving the.
Thank you. The, recall that we installed the first stage of the walkway last year, and that follows the arc of the beach. The next step will be to have the walkway continue around and over to Windmill Beach. The ultimate design here is to have the three parks integrated one to the other, and in a manner that will be fully ADA compliant. The first step in this is to get up a rail. We've been inviting bids for the rail. People ask what the rail might look like. We've got in terms of a beach-like rail, the two banisters that go down the steps onto the beach. We can continue that kind of rail along and under and around, or we can raise our sights and try to do something that's the equivalent of the Long Wharf railing, which is about three to four times more expensive. So we're in the process of shopping for money and friends and pro bono. But one way or the other, we've made a high priority of completing the access, not just for ADA people, but for the entire public to be able to move comfortably between Steinbeck, Windmill, without crossing Bay Street. So that is, I, I would move that we get the secret process underway for that. Is there a second?
I seconded it, right.
You did. I thank you. Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Thank you. Next up is to initiate SECR for the Long Wharf Transient Dock Project. This is the project I mentioned earlier, on the left, the west, west side of the Long Wharf, where we receive bids on Friday. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Matter is. Matter is approved. Oh, thank you. Number twenty-three, the mayor, authorization of mayor to sign the harbor master agreement with the village of North Haven. This is an annual pro forma. We provide harbor master services to our neighbors. And it, if the harbor master wasn't busy enough, this just increases the scope of what he looks after. I will move that. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Thank you. Number twenty-four, approving the appointment of Michelle Field as Justice Court Clerk. This is going to happen in two stages. We earlier observed that Leslie was retiring going on and this is to bring in a new clerk. You know, the arrangement here is we host the village court and we work very closely with Judge Rana, who is the presiding officer. This is her recommendation to us for the clerk she would like to appoint. And given her transition from East Hampton, where she's been a long time professional, senior professional, that we're going to do it in two stages. So there's a motion here, which I will make. And that's to author, authorize the village to hire Michelle Field temporarily as a part-time justice court clerk at an hourly rate of thirty dollars. And that's just through the month of January for transition and then thereafter to step into a full-time assignment as the clerk of the court and we'll put her in a regular line. And this is just to bridge these, these weeks. So I'm happy to make the motion. I don't know, Kate, do you want me to make them separately or together?
We can make it together.
So, and there is a resume of Michelle Field, which I think been.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, I would hear all those in favor indicate.
I.
Saying aye.
I.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Next up, the improvement to payment of bills. Let us take warrant number thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four. And sequence.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, the back page. So a motion to approve.
Still moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We come now to the second public comment period on any subject. Anybody care to be heard on any matter? Okay, thank you. I would hear a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
With a New World's ground record for meeting.